Like to call a commission meeting to order, please. Jennifer, is there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
See, there is or is none?
There are none.
Okay, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Move read the agenda. Second.
Motion second to adopt the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Need approval of the October 10, 2013 minutes. If there's any changes or deletions, corrections?
Move approve all of the agenda.
The second. Motion second to approve the minutes of October 10, 2013. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes are now official. Members of the council and the audits. Berkeley, I think you're the only one that don't want to speak. Okay. Any items to be deferred, Jennifer?
There are no items on the deferral agenda today.
Okay. Items on consent?
As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the planning commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the planning commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. As a notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. The first item on the consent agenda today is item number three, 2013 Z-013 TX 001. LED signs in MUI, MUIA, ORI, and MHP zoning districts. This is a request to amend Section 1732050 of the Metropolitan Zoning Code to prohibit LED message boards and digital display signs within the MUI, MUIA, ORI, and MHP zoning districts. Staff recommends approval with a companion ordinance for ORIA. Item number five, 2013 S-137001, Shelby Village Number One resub of lots 10 and 11. A request for final plat approval to create six lots and for a variance from the sidewalk requirement of Section 3-8.2 of the Metro subdivision regulation on properties located at 500 and 501 Village Court and at 1420 Shelby Avenue, zoned RS5. Staff recommendation is to approve with condition. Under other business, item number six, a grant contract between the state of Tennessee, the Department of Transportation, and the Metropolitan Planning Commission of Metropolitan Government of Nashville, Davidson County on behalf of the Metropolitan Planning Organization for transportation, planning, and coordination activities in the Unified Planning Work Program for fiscal year 2014-2015. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number seven, to amend the 2013, 14 through 2018, 19 capital improvements budget ID number 08FI0029, which provides $55 million funded by proposed geo bonds to $60 million funded by proposed revenue bonds for the construction of a minor league baseball stadium. Staff recommendation is to approve. And number eight, to set the public hearing date for amendments to the subdivision regulations on December 12, 2013. Staff recommendation is to approve.
Jennifer, would you read off the item numbers for me?
Yes.
Make sure I've got those.
So the consent agenda has items number three, five, six, seven, and eight.
Is there someone here on two?
Two was taken off the consent agenda, yes. Is there someone here? We believe there is someone here.
Okay. So we're looking at items one, on public hearing, items one, two, and four. Is that correct?
Correct.
Now, are people here to speak on item two?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. And item four, is there the council members here pertaining to item four?
Can we add four to consent?
Okay. Adding item number four to the consent agenda. Hold on a second. This is item 2013 Z-014 TX 001, automobile-related uses conditions. A request to amend Chapters 17.08 and 17.16 of the Metropolitan Zoning Code pertaining to specific automobile-related uses by making automobile sales new, automobile sales new a permitted-with-conditions use in the commercial services zoning district, and providing conditions for which the use is permitted, and by modifying existing conditions for automobile repair, automobile sales used, car wash, and vehicular sales and services land uses. Staff recommendation is to disapprove.
Okay. Commissioners, the items on consent that you'll be voting on are items number three, four, five, six, seven, and eight. Is there a motion to approve those on consent?
Second.
Motion second to approve on.
Chair?
Yes.
I just want to clarify that we're adding to consent item number four, which is recommended for disapproval by staff.
Right.
Okay. I just want to make sure that that was clear. It's rare that we have a disapproval on consent. Okay, thank you.
So items three, four, five, six, seven, and eight, motion to approve those on consent, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those have now been approved on consent. The two items for the members of the audience, the item number one is 905 Boscoval and a zone change number on item two on Harding. So, Harding, please. Go with Harding, please.
Item one is a zoning request for 906 Boscoval. This is for preliminary and final. Property is outlined in red. This is on the south side of Boscoval, just to the north side of Shelby. The request is to permit two detached residents. This is another view of the site. It currently contains one single-family home that is located at the rear of the site. Staff is recommending approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions. This is another view of the site, and another from another direction. The zoning is R8, which permits single and two-family residential. While it permits two-family, it only permits that the houses be attached instead of detached. This is also in the Edgehill Historic Preservation District. This is the site plan, and the general intent of this is to permit the homes to be detached where they're required to be attached by the zoning. So there's no additional density. You could do two units today. They're proposing two units. The SP would not permit any more units than what's permitted today. It would have to meet the bulk standards that are required by zoning and by the Historic Zoning Commission. We also, it would also have to meet parking and those types of requirements in the zoning. This is the proposed site plan. Do keep in mind that while you have a site plan here, it could change slightly depending on what Metro Historic approves with their final approval at that stage with the permit. The policy is neighborhood general. Neighborhood general is a residential policy. It supports all types of residential uses. It's intended to provide housing choices. The request is consistent with the Neighborhood General Land Use Policy. It's also, again, this is in the historic district. There is someone here from Metro Historic Zoning Commission to talk about any, if you guys have any questions. In inclusion, staff is recommending approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions as a request is consistent with the Neighborhood General Land Use Policy and is supported by the Metro Historic Zoning Commission.
Okay, so item is open for public hearing. The applicant can be allowed 10 minutes, and you may retain two minutes of that for rebuttal if you'd like.
My name's Daniel Fell, and I just wanted to let you know what it, I guess the photo was up there earlier. What I'm trying to do is solve a very unique problem. The lot, the house sits on the very back of the lot right now, and to detach, or to attach them would encroach on the front porch and would be a very difficult thing to make happen. So without increasing density or setting a precedent, this is an SP. I think that was the main concern of the opposition, is that it would set a precedent, but it's not setting any precedent that I'm aware of because you still have to go through the entire process of getting it approved. And Historic has signed on, councilmember, most of the neighborhood because it does solve a problem in planning, and that's all I have.
Okay. You'll be allowed two minutes before we close the public hearing for rebuttal.
Thanks, sir.
Any one, any audits wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on.
Plug. Plug. That's great. Plug. Plug behind you.
Was it not plugged in?
That's good.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor, line up behind the gentleman to microphone, please? Wishing to speak in opposition, yes. Go ahead and state your name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Logan Key. I live at 926 Woodland Street. I am president of the Historic Edgefield Neighborhood Association. 906 Boscoval Street is positioned within a residential block. If you read carefully the staff analysis, it lists two reasons to rezone this property. One, to preserve the existing structure, which happens to be positioned at the rear of the lot. And two, to allow construction of an additional dwelling. The existing structure is historically non-contributing. Preservation of that structure is not a compelling reason to rezone the property, especially a parcel that is within a residential block. Furthermore, allowing construction of a new unattached dwelling is entirely inconsistent with surrounding residential properties which are zoned R8. R8 does not permit unattached dwellings in the preservation district. Therefore, this proposal is utterly undermining the integrity of the preservation district. Furthermore, it's also unclear, based on a community meeting, if Mr. Fell definitely intends to reside on the property. If he does not, his situation would hardly be a hardship that might warrant special consideration. The commission should therefore not approve this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
My name is Carol Norton. I live at 801 Boscoval Street and have been a neighbor in Historic Edgefield for over 35 years. I'm requesting the SP request to be denied, and these are the reasons. The recommendation from the Metro Historic Commission was made by staff. Staff may review items specified by Metropolitan Historic Zoning Commission Rules of Order and Procedure. And as you see from the attached supporting documents which were circulated among you, zoning issues are not included or permitted by staff. Therefore, this recommendation is voided, and planning should not use that recommendation. It also does not meet the Historic Edgefield Preservation District guidelines as they were written, and do not conform to the Secretary of Interior's guidelines either. Supporting information regarding the Secretary of Interior's guidelines and the Edgefield guidelines were in the supporting documents that you were given. Requirements that address the introduction of new construction in historic districts that are incompatible with its surroundings is a primary concern of ours. There is no historic evidence for two full-size houses on any property in Edgefield, or in East Nashville for that matter. I can't tell you the calls that I've gotten from our neighbors in Lachlan who have experienced this already and said, "Please fight this. We don't want any more." If you recall, originally historic neighborhoods were exempted from the duplex ordinance, and that was overturned by council and included everybody. So we hope that you, in your wisdom, support the historic zoning that we have in place.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name's Tom Brown. I've been in Edgefield 24 years. I'm also a bit of a developer and still own five properties in Historic Edgefield. And in every renovation or rebuild, we followed the guidelines. We didn't try to change them. We followed what was in place. I've also been president of Historic Edgefield four different times over the 24 years. And the pioneers like Carol and Carol Williams, who've been there 35 years, worked hard to make the zoning what it is today, downzoning. So the last thing we want to do is start a different way, of a different adding, adding two properties to a property, and two houses to a property. And those could potentially be sold off as two different lots on one property. So we're completely against it, and hoping that you, that you disapprove it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Speaking in opposition?
Good evening. My name is Greg Bowling. I live at 908 Boscoval Street, directly next door to 906. I am in opposition of this proposal, primarily due to what I can only describe. I'm not a planning expert by any means, but what I would describe is just volumetric issues. You know, we have, in Historic Edgefield, it's a place for families, it's a place for family dwelling. And honestly, we are already, I believe, at capacity with parking and the amount of people in the dwellings, you know, nearby. And in this case, I believe there's just no way that we will be able to accommodate the extra cars. I do think that it is questionable, from conversations I've had and others have had, as mentioned previously, as to whether or not Mr. Fell plans to live at the residence. And I believe that if it does turn into another rental property, in addition to the rental property right behind it, we're going to have continuing problems with the amount of people trying to park in a very limited space. So again, I'm in opposition for those reasons and for all those listed before me. Thank you.
Anyone else speaking in opposition? Seeing now the applicant has two minutes for rebuttal if he'd like to speak.
Most of those, I've also lived in, in East Nashville since '02, and those concerns are not, the last gentleman said that it's going to increase parking. It's not going to change a thing. The only thing that this will change is that, right now, it's permitted for a structure to be built right, as it shows right there. It just has to be connected. The only thing this is trying to achieve is not to, so they will not have to be connected. That's the only change. All the other fear-based conjecture is simply that. It's just fear of the unknown, as far as I can tell, because there's, that is literally the only change. The SP requests that they do not have to be attached because of the unique nature of how the building, the existing building sits. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Please, a motion to close the public hearing? Motion second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Jeff?
Dwayne, help me understand, by current law?
Jason.
Jason, excuse me. Sorry about that. By law, he can build another structure and attach it to the existing house on the lot?
That's correct. There's no, there's no density change.
Okay, that's all I've got. Thanks.
I'm not putting pressure on you, Hunter, but I guess I have a question about, it was, it was about the Historic Commission's perspective. It was approved at staff level, and so the commission nerds didn't see it, is that right so far?
No, I would rather staff address this, but my understanding is, and I have a similar question, was that the commission, Historic Zoning Commission has not acted. That was staff, staff's recommendation. And the question for either Robin or Legal is based on the code, and the law, and our rules, and all those things, the order in which we approve one, one commission over the other. What is that, and does it vary depending on, as suggested by one of the community members? Does it vary based on what that, what you're actually approving?
You're absolutely right. There's been no action at all by the Historic Commission. All, all different departments comment on different planning issues, and that's all it was, staff's comments.
And if I could augment that answer, we've been kind of, the Historic Commission typically does not get involved in rezonings such as this, but we've asked them for their, their staff's professional opinion as part of our evaluation tool in here, and so they were responding in terms of, just like any of the other departments, from one staff to another in terms of their, their expertise. It was not, I don't think it was intended, and the Historic Preservation Staff didn't intend it to be a position of the commission. It was a position, a recommendation of the staff, and based on their expertise.
Could I, sorry, Andrea, if I could ask a related question? Will the Historic Zoning Commission have to approve, I know we have to approve the architectural guideline, you know, based on the guidelines, but the actual detached, if he wants to come in and build a second house, and that comes through for permit, will the Historic Zoning Commission have to approve the fact that it's detached, or will that be established by this SP?
That's established by the SP. Whichever decision you go with to approve or disapprove, the commission will review that design. If it's attached, they'll review it. If it's not attached, they'll review it.
I was just looking at the overhead to understand about scale and massing and what's already there. That's a helpful picture. I guess Historic, you know, back to the, somebody's comment about how if there's something that's not contributing, if overall, if someone else came along to develop it, they might ask Historic if they could tear down the house on the back and put something in the front, and that would probably be allowed if there's a non-contributing structure. And I think that's, was I heard, part of that discussion. But we're not the Historic Commission, so it's a little awkward. I'd like to hear from my other commissioners.
The new structure, whether it's attached or not, must be essentially in keeping with the guidelines. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So essentially, from a street scape standpoint, a non-contributing structure, would it be safe to say that the commission would only approve that if it were a contributing? No, it doesn't make it contributing because it's new, but help me out here. I was on the Historic Zoning Commission for a year, but it's been a while.
Well, again, Robin could address this better than I could, but certainly a new structure built in front of this would, if this SP is approved, would be detached, but it would have to meet the same guidelines that any other new structure would have to here. And of course, the commission would have to approve all new construction in this district, so it would actually go before the commission for determination of whether it meets the guidelines.
These other structures that are back, I guess, on the alley, they are, they're there as a matter of right because they've been there. Is that right?
Well, some of these, as you can see, are not, they're garages, so they're accessory structures, and they're not.
Are any of these living structures at all?
The only one that I'm not quite sure about is the one on the corner here. It's a very large garage. I'm not 100% certain if it's got a unit on the second floor or not.
Well, it does seem like it is a change for this area to start a tradition of having two living units on it, but it, it's not completely the issue before us because that, that can happen either way. There's nothing in our code that prevents an adjoining property, just that the Historic Zoning would have to approve the design, basically. Is that your understanding?
That's correct. You can build two homes today.
Attached.
It's an interesting question. I'm surprised we haven't had more of these, but, I mean, this is, I guess, the first protected, historically protected neighborhood we've had in Nashville. It's been there for a long time without, without us facing this.
I think the issue here is that the house is, unlike other lots where you've had teardowns and construction, the intent here is to try to preserve the existing building. So that's, that's what they're trying to do. That's why they're requesting this, is to preserve the existing building.
For financial reasons, basically. And it's, it doesn't contribute to the neighborhood, we think, right? It doesn't contribute in a design way. It would not be allowed today.
Well, it's an alley building, so, you know, it does not contribute clearly from the street right away, correct?
It could not be built as it is now today.
I don't know that that's true.
Why not? I thought it was said to be non-contributing.
A structure could be built there. It doesn't have historic design is what makes it non-contributing. It's the character, it's maybe built in the seventies.
It's not illegal. It just couldn't be built this way today.
Let's ask Historic, Robert, is this a contributing structure?
It is a non-contributing structure based on its design and its location. If someone, if this were a vacant lot and that someone wanted to build a building today, whether it's single-family or duplex, we would require that that building be set up along with the front setbacks adjoining on either side. So that's really our perspective on this, is that it actually corrects a situation that's negative for the neighborhood by allowing a building to be up front, hide that one in the back, and be in alignment with all those other buildings along the street.
If they came in and asked for this to be torn down today, you would, Historic would say they could.
Definitely, we would approve that, but we don't have the ability to ask them to demolish it, and we probably wouldn't because it is a, appears to be a perfectly viable home. So, you know, knowing that they want to keep that home, the next best thing would be to add a home to the front that meets those front setbacks. We thought that not having the attachment was an improvement because the new home can meet the massing of the neighborhood and the design guidelines better than if it has that long attachment. We've heard from many, many neighbors in all of our neighborhoods that have concern over large additions and what that does for rear yard privacy, loss of light and air, lot coverage, which causes runoff issues. So not having that attachment would also take care of those issues.
Thank you.
Yeah, the Historic Zoning Commission has really struggled with the accessory dwelling unit issue, the attached duplex issue. Sometimes we get side-by-side duplexes that are trying to look like a single-family house. Sometimes they're trying to look like townhomes. Sometimes they have the appendage or the umbilical cord. Sometimes they're trying to be a garage, but, and then there's, and there's accessory dwelling units, and there's detached units. I don't know, there's all these different definitions. And it just seems absurd that we can't seem to get this, figure this out, you know? I don't know why. I mean, I'm not, I'm not criticizing anyone because I know it's complex, and there's laws and guidelines and different commissions and so on, but why, you know, when I first looked at this, I thought, well, you know, in, I've never quite understood why in the historic districts a duplex couldn't be detached. So I don't know the history, I don't know if anyone can explain the history behind that or the reason, because historically, I don't know if in Nashville as much, but certainly other places, a detached dwelling unit would not be uncommon at all, you know, in historic neighborhoods. Now, this probably doesn't qualify as, as an accessory dwelling unit because of its size, I'm guessing. Is that correct? I'm not thrilled about, you know, because, and I know this is a unique situation, but I'm certainly not thrilled about utilizing the SP in this manner, you know, to, in such a sort of isolated location. At the same time, it may be, it sounds, it's probably the only tool in the box to get, get where the developer wants to be, which, you know, I'm not sure fundamentally I have a real problem with. with. You know, I did want to point out that, you know, a couple of the community members talked about whether the owner would be residing on the lot. I think I know the answer to this, but just for the public's sake, I just want to clarify, we are not to consider who occupies the home in our decision. Thank you. You know, the volumetric issues, I think Robin addressed, you know, could actually be better with a detached unit because we have seen these homes that are stretched, you know, 100 feet deep because they're attaching two units, and so they block privacy and air and light and tear down trees and so on. Again, there's no, you know, there won't be any more cars than there would be if they did tear down this building and built a duplex right back that met the guidelines. So I'm not sure where I'm going, but I'm just thinking aloud.
When I look at this map, it makes good sense to me to put a house in the front to help with the street scape, so I don't have a problem adding the home in the front. The house next door seems to be, you know, massive in terms of how far back and how deep it stretches and having a couple of detached. What are those across the street there with the black roofs? Are those?
Those are two sets of, I think they're six-unit buildings, I think.
Okay, apartments.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, when I look at this, I would think that it would improve the appearance of the street if there was a house up front there that blended with the rest of them. That's the only comment I have.
Phil?
I have one technical question. Once a home is built on the front part of that lot, does it then become the primary residence on the lot or does that matter?
I don't think, there's not a primary, but it'll be the one that has the most, that Historic will have the most control over because it becomes the one that's primarily visible from the street, yes.
Right. Oh, well, that's what.
There's not a, I'm not assured that, we don't have a primary and secondary residence.
Yeah, that would just, if it was one of the accessory detached units.
Yeah, well, mainly that the current residence that's on there does not become subservient to the front one.
It's just, I mean, this basically is just like everywhere else that you're allowed detached duplexes, you just have two units.
Okay, thank you.
Walter.
Rick, are we allowed to ask a question?
No, only when the commissioner says a question, I guess.
The fact is, I'm sorry. Now, looking at this entire block that's before me, this house sits on this plot that we are discussing looks totally out of character as it sits. Then to look at the rest of it, all the way down the block, it seemed as though you already got two structures on every lot. Of course, it may not be a house, except one looks like a small jazzy apartment in the back. I don't know what it is, but the fact I'm trying to put out here is a fact that it's seemed though every lot on that street has two units on it, whether it's a house or whether it's a barn, a shed, we don't know what it is, but I just don't see a big issue with putting, building on that lot detached, and it's, to me, it looks just like the rest of it, so I don't really have a problem with it.
I have one more question, if I may.
Okay. You finished, Walter?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Andre.
The question was raised whether it could be, in the future, divided into two lots if they're not, if they're not attached. Is that legally, would that be legally possible if they're duplexes, if they're detached duplexes, could someone divide it into two different parcels and sell them separately and have two owners?
The zoning that's going forward with this SP would prohibit that. They would require a variance if they went for the subdivision regulations, if they tried to do that, but they would have to also amend the zoning or rezone the property.
So the way that we would, if we approved it this, the way it's written today, someone could not divide it into two parcels?
That's correct.
It would be very, it would be exactly like all the other detached duplexes across town. Basically, the units are on fee simple and the land's condo is a condo between the two property owners.
You could have a horizontal property arrangement of two different owners.
Right.
So they could be sold separately, but not?
The unit, but the lot cannot be split.
But did you say they could be sold separately if they got a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals?
No, if, say if the SP did not prohibit the lot to be split, someone could propose a lot split, but they would require variances from the subdivision regulations for no lot frontage.
Which would come back here?
Correct.
Okay, now I'm confused. If we happened to approve this and it became law through council action, could these structures be sold separately as is, without further?
Yeah, the structures could be sold separately, they just can't be on two separate lots.
Without a variance from this?
Well, there's several things about this. I don't know the exact size of this lot, but I guarantee you this lot is not 16,000 square feet, so it would not meet the zoning for two lots and it couldn't be separated because it doesn't have street frontage. I mean, there's a ton of issues that would require either rezoning and/or subdivision variances.
To sell to two different owners?
To sell the lot, to split the lot.
That's right. I'm just talking about the problem, the structure. Someone have a motion?
I would like to hear the question from the gentleman from the neighborhood if I could. I'd like first to answer that if we could.
Well, that's what I want to ask you.
Give them the microphone.
Selling it as two separate lots, but also I was asked by Carol Williams to mention that there are 38 lots in Historic Edgefield that this could be done too as well. So if this passes, there are 38 more possibilities of lots similar to this that someone could come in and do this. So then you're increasing, you know, two houses on one lot times X number. So that was my question, especially if it could be sold as two lots. But then still, you're selling two condos separately at that point. So now you've got two condos times X number that could be potentially allowed.
So that was one of my questions.
But of course, the whole neighborhood is zoned for duplexes.
It is zoned for duplexes. It's not zoned for two houses. I mean, like the houses that I renovated and I built, I built, and in fact, upside down in several of them because it's just, the market fell and we lost our shirt, but we did what we're supposed to do. But it's not two houses. Like, for instance, I could potentially maybe build another house in my backyard. How many people could do that now? Come back to you guys and say, okay, you know what? I want to build another house in the back of my property.
We're considering this because it's an existing structure.
Why can't I build one in the back?
Well, I think that is an interesting point, but I think the, right now, because it's in the overlay, if it were a contributing use, if it were a contributing structure, can they, can they then add those now, as you suggest, in those 38 lots, as long as they're simply?
Yes, because in that case, you can't tear it down.
Well, you don't know where those 38 lots are with how they're configured. You're looking at one lot today and that's what you.
I know, but I think it's an interesting question.
Let me kind of clarify that. You cannot, today, you cannot build two separate dwelling units on our eight lot in this area without it coming and going through a rezoning.
Before the council.
Right.
And that was our thing. So once a precedent is set, then it could be done again and again.
Just be sure I understood what you said. There are 38 lots with a house on the very back of the lot, just like this, in that neighborhood? Okay, that's what I meant.
But, front or back? If you can build two on one lot, why can't you build two on any of them?
That's what I'm asking.
Okay.
I do have one to follow up.
Gentlemen, want a motion? I know you do, but I don't believe that if this was a contributing structure, we have too many people with red lights on, don't we?
[inaudible].
Sounds like my wife. If, and I'm trying to get a sense of the precedent issue, the, if this was a contributing structure, can another contributing structure be approved now with the adjoining building? Or does it, is a 38 lot's really not the real story because it would only be a precedent for non-contributing structures? And I guess that might be a question for the, for the staff of the Historic Zoning Commission.
I mean, it seems like with a contributing structure, you're not going to attach a duplex house to it.
Right, because that would not be.
Because then it wouldn't be contributing.
Well, let me ask her.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think it would be.
Does it?
We would not recommend adding a house attached to the front of a contributing structure. And I unfortunately don't know what these 38 lots are, so I can't tell you if they're contributing or not, or where the house is on the lot, but I'm sure planning would like to look at those too. We were just, this was such a unique situation, we were really just looking at this lot.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, I've got one question and then a comment. I think the, there was mentioned in a letter and maybe one of the community members, a downzoning. I was a little confused about what that's referencing because when I first saw this letter, I thought it meant it'd been zoned to single-family. But does anyone know what the reference to downzoning?
I believe the reference was a historical reference. Obviously, when this neighborhood received historic status, it was downzoned from what was a multifamily zoning district at that time to an R zoning district. That was, that was my interpretation of that. It was reflecting the history of Edgefield and going from, and obviously, many people have had battles in terms of changing from multifamily units to one and two-family units in this area.
Is there, do you have a quick assessment of how we, why we don't have detached duplexes in that, I mean, what the historic reason is for that over there?
The council, the council originally approved detached duplexes in the area outside the UZO. They have taken a position requesting that we research the extension of that alt-county wide. It was done as a, it was felt that they wanted to get a sense of the history in what was larger lot areas, for overgeneralization, and they have asked us to investigate whether it should be extended citywide.
So I think, I'm sorry.
I move approval with all staff conditions.
Motion second to approve the staff's recommendation, all in favor? No.
No.
Raise, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries. Ready for item number two.
This is a zone change request for 88 acres of undeveloped property located southwest of the International Airport, north of the interchange of I-24 with Harding Place, from its existing zoning designation of R-10 to one of IWD, which is industrial warehousing and distribution. Staff's recommendation is to approve. As I stated, the subject property is currently zoned, the two parcels that make up the subject property are currently zoned R-10. They're adjacent to residential zoning to the north and northeast of the site, and industrial zoning generally to the south and east, sorry, north and northwest of the site of the residential. Industrial zoning located to the south and east of the subject property. The, while there are residentially zoned properties to the north of the site, many of those parcels have been purchased by the airport authority as part of an airport mitigation program associated with the impacts of the airport. As you can see from this slide, there's significant floodway and floodplain across the southern boundary of the site associated with Mill Creek. The policy for the property is mixed. It's district industrial as well as conservation policy. Those conservation policy areas are associated with the floodplain and, as well as slopes related to the site. There are several requirements in our zoning code, our subdivision regulations, as well as metro stormwater regulations that will mitigate or address any impacts related to those conservation areas. The proposed IWD zoning is consistent with the district industrial policy associated with the site. There are several characteristics that are noteworthy related to this project and they are specifically related to site access and the relationship of the property to the nearby residential area. First, access to the site, the principal access to the site will most likely come from Interstate 24 through Harding Place, from the south portion of this property, as opposed to any circulation or route that might come from the northern side through that residential neighborhood. There are requirements that will help mitigate any impacts associated with the industrial development of the site as it relates to the residential neighborhood. The code requires a D landscape buffer along that north and west boundary. The minimum D landscape buffer is 30 feet and is, requires significant planting. It's worth noting that the site is already pretty heavily forested along that north and west boundary, anyway. Additionally, let me go back. Additionally, the code prohibits vehicular connections between industrially zoned property and residential neighborhoods, so they would not be able to, if they could get across the topography and the forested part of that property, they would not be allowed to connect to any of those residential streets abutting this property. Again, there's floodplain along the southern portion of this property associated with Mill Creek, and there are regulations that would mitigate any impacts that development of the site would have there. It's also worth noting on this, on this slide, the relationship of the property to an existing runway for the International Airport. This site is directly under a flight path associated with that airport, making this property likely unsuitable for its residential, for any residential development. So with that, staff is, or in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of this zone change.
Thank you. Item is open for public hearing. The applicant will be allowed 10 minutes. If you'd like to keep two minutes of that back for rebuttal, you may.
We appreciate the opportunity to be here today. I'm Chris Wimpey with Hawkins Development Company at 461 Craighead, Nashville, Tennessee. The item before you, we began, actually, a couple of years ago, I've got a very patient landowner who has been working with us, certainly, we have met on and off at various times regarding the potential of this property. The problem they've had is, the potential seems to go away when the land isn't zoned properly to permit a developer to continue to study it. So we were engaged by the Miles Estate to make an effort to rezone this property. We have engaged area industrial developers who do the flex space in that area and have an interest. The most significant thing in the exhibits before you are really good in that really bizarre left, I mean, on the east side of the plan, the curve that bites into the property to the east side, that was originally supposed to be the place where McGavick Pike was relocated. During construction, they decided to move that to the east. As you can imagine, that complicated ingress egress off of our property, and that property belongs to the airport. Subsequently, the plans to expand runways have increased and there is a protection zone that, while not shown on either. These plans kind of bite into our property here. It's part of a runway protection zone that comes onto the property. While those rules are fluctuating, most of the time we had to wait, was to wait on the FAA to tell us that they, they had an understanding of the property and what our restrictions would be. We subsequently have agreed with them on how to come and go from the property, which would be either to the north end of this property, east side, or the south. Currently, the south in a potential first phase. We have deferred this twice in order to meet with residents that showed up in opposition or that needed more information. To date, we have met with five property owners. I think we have two new ones here today, and Councilman Stites, we've been working with him. We had a meeting planned for last week to meet, but apparently his location didn't make, so that meeting has now been set for the fourth. His recommendation was to continue, and we would be available to addition. His recommendation was to continue, and we would be available to additional residents on the evening of the fourth, and it would be before the public hearing with the council bill, should that proceed. That being said, the airport owns all the property to the east, they own 10 parcels to the northeast. We have support of one 13-acre neighbor, which is the next lot over to the properties you were shown that the airport has. We have met with property owners on Bel Air Drive, which is the drive that connects to the west side. Their primary concern was the traffic and would we connect a road through there. By regulations not permitted, it also wouldn't be of interest. The south side had one neighbor questioning whether we would be working in the floodplain. We hosted a meeting and invited everyone we knew of that had called to attend that meeting at Roy Dale's office. We had that meeting. That member is now in support. Additionally, other properties to the south, which are close relationships to us, are in support. Louis Agnew is here today representing them. So we believe we have support of the south, the east, and the north. The residences to the east, we have met with and are not here today, so I suppose we reached them with information. I believe the additional folks here today, the two families, are to the northwest, but I'll let them speak to that. This has been in the industrial land use policy plan for a long time. The development we would put there would be a low-rise industrial flex type of product similar to what those right off the end of Harding Place likely are today. The airport had concerns, they've got restrictions for vertical space, it'd be impossible to put a really tall building in there. The topography also represents a challenge on the site and has buffering available. We are perfectly happy to commit to a permanent buffer along that east and, I mean, the west and the north sides, which is represented here and required by regulations. So we believe we have support of the south, the east, and the north. The north is also in the protected MDHA area, and they were part of the airport conversation. So with that said, we'd like to hold over our minutes for response, should we need any.
You have two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support?
My name's Louis Agnew, address 5849 Merrimack Court, Nashville, Tennessee. I represent the families that own the properties to the south, probably have the longest border to this subject property. Most of the use for our property is industrial flex warehouse, and our interest in this property is that it would be developed well and thoughtfully, but we're in support of it, is the plan that they've laid out. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
My name is Sandy Osteen. I live on 616 Vincent Drive. This is a street just north of Bel Air. Tonight, I got to speak to the developer from Hawkins, and this is our first time, being a resident, we were notified during the month of September about the rezoning of the property. But this is the first time we've known of any meetings that were given to, or arranged by the developer, meeting with the neighborhood of any residents on Bel Air, Vincent, or any place else. So, but I'm glad they decided to have another meeting. We have, I have, including a couple of other residents in the area, try to contact the councilman, has not returned any phone calls within the last two, three weeks. So we did not know about if anything was scheduled for this month until tonight. We just found out that there's a meeting scheduled for some, on November 4th. But the main issue we have is, being a resident there, and we're living in this neighborhood for many, many years, since the early 80s and mid 80s, and I still, and some people representing here own several homes in the area. We went through all the development and the mitigation stuff with the airport, everything from buying the homes to having mitigation done, from having homes modified with sound insulation and all this kind of stuff. We went through a lot with the airport. Our main concern is, is we know that the use of the land is very difficult residential, and it's not practical today. We understand that, because of this adjacence to the airport properties, and the airport owns all the property to the north. And they bought all those homes 20 years ago because of that. So the land is available to be used and still zoned R-10. So here's what we, I think, that eventually, if you allow this to happen, which is, seems to be the most logical thing to do for IWD, and that's probably going to happen to the rest of the properties that the airport owns, they can allow that to happen. So our request is to have it at least delayed or denied for tonight, if you're going to vote on it, and primarily, if you were going to do, vote to approve it, is to change it from IWD to IWSP. And if anybody can talk about that on the council, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Steven, Andre. You've got two minutes for rebuttal, if you'd like to speak.
We have deferred twice, and the cards went out to all the areas and went out, I guess, two meetings ago, and we're continuing to work with them. We certainly spoke at length with airport authority about land uses that were potential there. We would request that we follow the land use policy plan and be approved for what we've submitted tonight. We're continuing to try to be good neighbors and certainly intend on working within all the regulations required to help be a good neighbor, and so we would appreciate your support and available for any questions.
Thank you. Motion to close the public hearing. Motion second, close the public hearing, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Walter.
I have been going to make something else for you. Thank you.
Judy?
Thank you.
When I look at this plan and hear everything that's going into it and the different partners around it, it makes good sense to me, so I know I'll be approving it. Thank you.
Stuart?
One of the challenges in our city is land for well-developed light industrial. I think this is a great use and a great plan.
Derek? Andre?
Jeff said what I was going to say. I think it's a good idea, and I think it's important to say to the public again, just that the Mill Creek is something that people have worked really hard to clean and keep intact, and if we've got these regulations to protect it, then I would feel comfortable approving it.
Ms. Your motion?
I move we approve staff's recommendation. To approve.
Motion to prove staff recommendations, all in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Anything from historic? You got a quick, short dissertation?
Me? Very short. I'm up. Just a couple of things. We had a great growth mapping exercise. We had two of those on October 12th and October 21st. We had 36 tables, over 300 people, and we had, those people spent about two hours contemplating how to accommodate the next 100,000, or 200,000 people and 300,000 jobs. And I think we had a comment from a lady on Saturday that probably summarized people's feelings on this, and I think was appropriate. She said she came to this exercise in order to protect her neighborhood, and after going through the exercise, she had decided that she was glad she was not the mayor in having to make these decisions. So I think that a lot of, I think a lot of recognition is, you know, the staff, we had people that turned over three tables, facilitating those tables, and it was pretty intense, but I think, I think it was a lot of fun. So it was intense.
Threw the tables over?
Well, we're posting this stuff, but basically, we had maps, and we'll show them to you. Everybody loved our maps. They're eight by eight, eight by eight-foot maps of the county, and we had scaled sizes of different development patterns, and you had to kind of put enough chips on the table that, that would allow, you know, allow you to do it. We've got a YouTube video up, that's up now, and we will have the maps up. But, you know, when they actually saw the size and how many people, the bank was fairly busy changing over more low-intensity uses to the more urban uses, so that they could get it all in, so. But it was also an exercise that required, as you, we talked about at the work session, that required some contemplation of what you were going to do in infill situations as well, so. The only other thing is, I will note that we've got seven upcoming Nashville Next presentations, including the training session with the Hendersonville Planning Commission, which, I think Jennifer's doing it. No, I think I'm doing that. And finally, we have a training session on November 6th, where you can get another hour and a half of credit on smart growth in small towns and rural areas. That's it.
Will I see everything from the council? Any report?
No, no report.
Okay. Any other comments? Stand the general.